I got some sort of problem going on. Very both like up to fast.
So no, I think somewhere just feel like I'm sitting all alone, but oh, well.
Research, right?
Could be my imagination. Maybe these aren't just
what? I gotta go pick you up, Malcolm. A slow, dirty stair. And if you fall over, but like nothing to see here, nothing to see here.
But I was just gonna see. There's a thing on the bottom. Well, that's and I think that's my my imagination. I thought they were they were adjustable, but I don't.
Maybe it's pretty short.
It looks short. All right.
I like short.
You make crops actually, I need a bit better.
Well, you got better things to do than that, Daryl.
Short in Cambridge.
Also, meaning could be a little sketchy.
I didn't see any difference.
Working forward if I'm doing this, think no, it won't be discussion because are you doing something we're
we're going back to
Oh, no.
That's my daughter's birthday.
Little bit of foresight and a positive bit more.
So we're having bestie birthday.
He might have it developers putting up three hundred thousand. They're like both get to have some fun together. I don't want to go for high key.
Oh, nice. I don't know.
You know what? Really yell a lot by the end of it. Get in the car. You know what? On our land, no matter what vacation you on our land tensions and you have a good time. Parenting and that's happening is you don't have a husband. That's my problem. Bob's chair into the United States.
See, so likes it lower.
I get your point.
Amber show up. Not it.
I'm better. So I'm ready for her. Be good for her.
Love her. I love her.
Come on in. You can wait in here. We're friendly. We're friendly. Maybe except for Daryl. Hey, Daryl, I saw the new bear of signs.
What do you think?
I love them.
That's pretty good, eh?
Looks pretty scary. Yeah, a bear would be scared of that bear.
Right?
Yeah.
The intent. Turner died.
No, no.
Two eighty-three. Turner.
You needed to tell me that now.
I know that this day.
Let's make my kid listen to me. Could someone have given me any heads up this morning?
I I don't think she died this morning. It's like an hour or two ago.
Yeah, let's see the Turner. The icon.
Buddy.
Hello. I guess I'd be stupid.
We're gonna get started here, everyone. We're gonna call this committee the whole meeting to order. I want that. One oh four, May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Respectfully acknowledge that the land on which we gather is national territory. Approval of the agenda recommend that the committee of the whole meeting agenda for May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three be approved as circulated. Council, Rich, Council, Bushel, any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Adoption of minutes, recommendation of the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting held on May tenth, twenty twenty-three be adopted. Council Bailey, Council Bushel, any discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, we have a delegation, the District of Sycamore's Development Corporation update Carly as well with tourism and economic development manager. Carly, take it away.
Hey, this mayor. All right. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm here to give you guys the quarterly update from the development corporation for both tourism and economic development. So we'll start with Tura Tourism, sorry. Very excited to report that we finished out twenty twenty-two with MRDT revenues at a hundred and five thousand, five hundred and eighty-five dollars. So each year, year over year, we're seeing a significant increase. I'm happy to report the first two months of twenty twenty-three, we've already collected just under sixteen thousand dollars, which is essentially ninety-four percent more than what we collected in January, February of twenty twenty-two. So we are on a tremendous track moving forward. It'll be interesting to see as our online accommodation provider numbers come through now that the bylaw has been adopted to see how our short-term rental revenues are recorded and tracked. There's no rhyme or reason as to when those numbers will come through and whether Destination DC will send them to us with that breakdown, but we do keep track of them and we'll report out so that we can track and see how that's going. So as of January this year, we changed who was managing our social media. We went with a Sycamore's agency called Moxie Marketing, and we got a report up until the end of April thirtieth. And it's been incredible, our growth both from an engagement, audio, throw impressions and visitor views on both of our platforms. So we have a strong directory app. I've got a ten-page report. If anybody is a big social media statistic nerd and would love to see it, I can share that. It's it's very interesting to see that our Facebook video views continue to lead but our interaction and our actual consumer group is still Instagram. So it's really showing us how we invest and how we develop our content and where we put that money to. So clearly, we all know video is king. So it's a bit more pricey, but it is giving us the impact and the shareability of the the content that we're producing in Sycamore's. Our website, the Exorcist Muscat website, our monthly page visits year-to-date. So in our slow season, are averaging about four hundred sessions per month and seven hundred page views. So of those four hundred sessions, those people have been accumulating, you know, one to two different page view clicks per use. So we will see a marked increase at the next quarterly update as we get into the summer season. Unfortunately, the visitor guide did not make it today. It's gonna be here tomorrow. I was really hoping to have it in front of you guys. The digital guide, though, is on a course of news.ca. It's been shared widely through Instagram, and I did in advance of the May long weekend, make a little table talker card that had the QR code that says, download our visitor guide here. It's optimized for phone and tablet use in terms of connecting that QR code. So it's really easy to view online. But I have talked to all the accommodators and they are very excited to get the increased amount of guides. We went from fifteen hundred guide print production to four thousand guide print production this year. So we've got a ton more going out. And if we've had a chance to look at the link, the guide has been refreshed. It's tightened up. The content has been streamlined a lot more. So there it gave us a little bit more space to really promote things like fire safety, the don't move a muscle, really focused on campaigns and gave out some complimentary ads to Shu Shua Trail Alliance, the Watershed Council, SARS, et cetera, so that they could really promote what they do. And then having a lot of summer social media campaigns offers a lot of those advertisements to give a the pain advertisers a little bit more push than just the guy, but also our local companies that are, you know, doing the good work here in Sycamore's. Right now, I'm taking part of something called the Tourism Sustainability and Resource Planning Program. So that's put on by Tora. And I'll be connected with an advisor that will go through specifically in Sycamore's, how we sustainably develop tourism products. This program will go into June, and I'll be able to report the different tactics that Toda is supporting each community market with to essentially monitor how they're sustainably managing traffic in sensitive areas, developing trails based on a certain amount of metrics. I'm working on it with Morgan from tourism. We are looking at it from a regional perspective, but also have the ability to drill down to a very low perspective. We continued with our Colton Airport arrivals digital ads. I know if anybody's traveled internationally or domestically, the ads are looking great. I changed them out, forming photos every month. When I came back from Mexico, it was the first time I'd actually seen them in person, and it was interesting to fan back and, you know, listen to people talk about, oh, my goodness, I didn't realize that, you know, or Sycamore's had a golf course like that, or, you know, you could ride ATVs around Sycamore's. So I do feel like they're, you know, they're happy because you do wait longer and longer to get your your luggage these days. And then we have Trans-Canada Highway billboard that is across from the burner, so a Malibu heading west. And with that, we've actually invested in reskinning it throughout the summer multiple times to go with multiple different campaigns. So right now, what we're focusing on is an eat-sleep in the wintertime. It was eat-sleep sled, and it has our our brand graphics on it. Now we're gonna shift to eat-sleep golf, eat-sleep fish, eat-sleep beach, eat-sleep shop. So there'll be a skin that gets rotated every six weeks between now and the time that we will replace it with the eat-sleep sled. Our Exorcist Muscat website updates are ongoing, so we made it a lot more user-friendly and a lot more ad-based pages to be part of our business directory. You can now write a little caption. So over the next couple of weeks, I'll be going in. It's a manual process that I have to go in and edit everything and add more pictures and logos, but it will give more visibility to our stakeholder, our tourism stakeholders, sorry, in town. Geo cash tour. So we had a very successful geo cash tour last year. We are going to add ten new spots. So right now, I'm working with both housing companies, the accommodators and restaurants to determine where we can place physical and virtual caches around town to increase this tour. June twenty-third, there will be a community event to launch the new geo tour. With that, will be hotel incentives to come and stay overnight. It's now going to be a twenty-five cash tour. It really does help the community in terms of getting people to stay overnight. So the whole goal we continue to build it to increase our visitation in our shoulder seasons where people will come and do the tour. So the locations will get a little bit more difficult, causing people to spend a little bit more time, but also driving them to our points of interest and hopefully generating some income for the locations near the caches that people perhaps didn't even know. That's that's bringing them downtown, that's taking them, you know, out to Old Town Bay, in the areas that, again, a lot of people passing through might not recognize that they can come in and see things. Another development is in terms of always looking at the smart ways to spend our money for data collection. The Star Data Initiative is one that I got turned on to by Mayor Anderson and CIO Venek about working with the BC Hotel Association to collect visitor data from a very specific program standpoint. So we have sample size right now of two hotels that are submitting their data to this organization, the BC Hotel Association, to collect the data. And I'm gonna be trying to onboard the rest of our accommodators so that we get a decent sample size. Again, it's it's twofold in terms of benefits where it will help the hotels to drive their marketing decisions, to see the ups and downs of their their average daily rate and where they're getting the most visitation. But it'll also help me because I get a a report that will spit back again to really track those trends and see a true visitation report that's coming not from just hotel or cellphone pings or Monera data. It's actually people that are staying in Sycamore's. I joined the Shu Shua or was appointed, sorry, to the Shu Shua Tourism Advisory Committee, sorry, as vice chair. We had our second meeting of the year. Again, it's a collection of fifteen stakeholders, I believe, from the Shu Shua region that are weighing in on the direction. Shu Shua Tourism is investing in a new tourism strategic plan that will be taking part in, and and I'll be working with my local tourism advisory committee as well as my board of directors to really make sure that Sycamore's is positioned in the best light, and we get the information that we want from their data collection, regardless of the size of our community. Shu Shua Trail's working committee is again a group that meets quarterly. I sit on that as well, and and it's stakeholders that are talking about all of the trail systems and what's going on, mechanized and non-mechanized throughout the region. So sorry, that was year-to-date. Now we've got what's upcoming for tourism. We've got wayfinding kiosks, which I'll speak to you guys about some information here on the next slide. Tell us environs data purchase. So looking at the information that we do collect, we haven't had anything really new since pre-COVID. A lot of the data was a bit skewed with everything that was happening. So we're gonna wait until the end of the summer season. I've already let's tell us, know that this is the type of data I will be collecting. So it'll be something that will be shareable. But again, looks at our visitation stats and it will actually pinpoint where people are coming from. So when we make our advertising decisions for the next MRDT cycle, we will know where we need to start sending more money in terms of billboards, radios, yeah, whatever we feel will be the best drop of those areas. One Peak Creative out of Palomar, coming to do a video shoot next week, May twenty-ninth and thirtieth. They'll be doing the GeoCash Tour. So their outreach is impressive. They do have an international outreach. So it's gonna help us drive our June twenty-fourth launch for the community event as well as the longevity of of content that we'll be able to share throughout the year to promote our our geo tour. MRDT report for twenty twenty-two is due at the end of this month. That will be shareable as soon as I submit it. As I mentioned, the June twenty-fourth launch. Tourism, I'm partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, and we're gonna be doing a tourism ambassador training again on June twenty-seventh. So the marketing and the invoice or the marketing and the registration information will go out mid-June to all of the tourism businesses that would like to send their their stat there to take part in this training, and we'll determine if we do one or two sessions based on the need from the businesses. And then we have a tourism photo shoot and drone video collection on June twenty-eight. So on the next slide, what I've come to ask Council for blessings for today is these are, we know that we don't have a lot of wayfinding sign for tourists, so tourists, sorry, as they're walking around town. So I've pointed out for four locations essentially, but two for sure that are kind of low-hanging fruit, and that's the beach park sign. That's all graffiti. That's in the parking lot at the beach park. So this particular sign hasn't been updated for a few years. So we'd like to, from a tourism standpoint, take that, work with Nicole and Daryl to ensure that we have their beach park rules on it, but give it a little refresh, a little bit more information about maps, where you're at, things to do, the event calendar, all of the really pertinent information that'll be important for tourists to see. And we'd like to do it double-sided so that you're seeing that there's something there that's gonna be, you know, beautiful, colorful, flashy from both sides of the park and the parking lot. The second one is the highway info kiosk refresh. Again, probably twenty years since it's been updated. If I had to guess, going by the content, this is an inexpensive piece because I already have the graphics. I just have to get it printed on Core Class and work with Daryl and his crew to get the sexy off and pop it in. So again, it's something that until highways totally cannibalize that parking lot, there's still a lot of people that go there. There's a picnic table there that people sit down or sit at. So I think that this again is another easy win for us to just update something so it looks a little bit more complete. Now, two new projects that I would like to look at is either the community garden and or Main Street landing ideas. This would be temporary signage until we can, as a development corporation, find a grant similar to what Sam and Arm did to get a full wayfinding program going. And I noticed that from your guys' priorities, that wayfinding signage isn't until twenty four, twenty-five, twenty-six, something like that. When I looked at your guys', when it was sort of slotted to be addressed. So I think if we can find it as a development corporation to do it in advance, we will go ahead, which is why these particular kiosks, I would work with slot on sign permits and Daryl on location and build something that would last for a couple of years that we can rotate the information out. These are some of the signs that Sarah and Stephanie, we've been talking about this since early twenty twenty-two. These are some of the signs that they said would fit the form and character. Again, it's just a matter of going through the process of getting the approval of finding a specific spot in one or both of those extra locations where there's heavy foot traffic. All right. So that is it for tourism. If anybody has any questions, I can answer tourism now, or we can go through economic development.
I'm just gonna check with Council, see if they have anything on tourism right now. So does anybody have anything they wanna add to tourism?
Maybe just a quick question.
To the chair. Yeah, great presentation, Carly. Yeah, I like the idea about wayfinding signs. I've always thought we really needed some in our community and in in the and in the right places. And I I like the ones that CSRD did in all their parks. They're they got counters on them. They're really, they're really, really well done, and they would look good in our community.
Through the chair, I think that visitor information was one of the picture you sent me, actually, that one of the left there.
Yeah, that one's at Sunnybury, Sunnybury Park. And really, really, really nice signs. I I like them. And it'd be nice to, you know, even have one somewhere at the entrance of Main Street or just past the roundabout or part of the roundabout and where somebody could, you know, even maybe by the school where they could pull over and look at it. So, good job. Thanks.
Pastor Bailey.
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The data from the Hotel Association, I might have missed it. What does it kinda tell you? It tells you like the demographic or how many night stands are going.
It's like the the average rate. So it'll it'll track that. So when we were, the reason this came up is when we were talking about reinvesting and getting our hotel tourism study, and BC Hotel Association actually said that this data is more relevant to developers, but also to the hotels themselves because it will help them track if they don't have that ability, but also measure up against other hotels. So they can see like, are they totally undervalued in our region? So it it's a lot about a numbers, like the the visitation and the actual trends on, you know, is there a weird weekend in September that people seem to, you know, come over others? And what does that mean? But also the the monetary implications on where they should be investing or where they, you know, potentially might have a hidden gem. So and I I'm just learning the program, so I could definitely show you more about it.
Very interesting.
Program.
Yeah. And then just the other thing with the wayfinding. I I think it's, these are great ideas. I'm just wondering if we could come up with something generic or a map that could even ask businesses to put up. I mean, I certainly have a spot where I could do that at probably either of our places where we could show something. And I think other businesses might be interested in doing that too, just to get us started. And I it's just an idea I throw out to you. You know, if there was something ready to go that we could put up that looks nice, that helps the town, then I think we could probably get businesses on board with it, too.
Yes, through the chair. And one of the investments I made with Maggie, who redid the guide, is I asked her to make a lot of files that were standalone. So we could almost pick and choose. I haven't seen what that's sweet about, but that could be really great to send to you, let's say, as a business owner and say, hey, either, you know, either you can print it out, or I could get maps printed out on Core Class, because I had talked to ask you, see, you know, maybe there's a way that we can put something on the outside of their building where they tend to have signage. So that could be another option. But in terms of it's a great idea to have more than just the mapping with the events calendar, so businesses could pick and choose.
Thanks. Anyone else? Hey, I have a couple of things, Carly. With the wayfinding signs you're asking for a blessing, I think Council's pretty it's a no-brainer for us. Yeah, move forward with it. I don't think. Pam, you're good?
Yeah.
Hey, so yeah, definitely go ahead and and make that happen. I'm I'm happy to see that the MRDT money is is increasing because, I mean, our goal is, you know, to take that money and invest it in Sycamore's, invest it in advertising, invest it in bringing people here. So I love the billboards. I love the video in the airport. I'd I'd like to see our video on our website used more because it's a great video. And it definitely showcases Sycamore's really well. And that was, I know it's a couple of years old. Thank you, great. But before, but it's still, it still is a really good video. You also have, you're changing the boards, the skins on the side of the the highway across from the burner. Do you have eat, sleep and boat on there as well?
Yes. Sorry, did I?
I mean, look at where we are. We better have a eat, sleep and boat sign, right?
Yeah.
The there's, mentioned two houseboat companies. There's actually three. So just wanted to make sure that we're approaching all all three.
Yeah.
And the signs in the park, I mean, it's great that we can add QR codes now, right? Because it just takes you everywhere and even QR codes to stand alone, as long as they're not competing, but you know. But no, great job. I think you're doing a wonderful job. And yeah, I'm excited to see what happens next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Council McCabe.
Yeah, you break my memory with the QR codes. The exercise equipment in Finneson Park there, some of the tags have how to use them are are missing. And a a couple of tours I bumped into said they really liked that, the outdoor exercise equipment. Maybe instead of instructions on the machines, how to use them, have a QR code on there, and then they can just download it themselves and and, you know, sort of update how how because if the tags are ripped off, who's gonna rip off a QR code? Nobody, but and everyone packs a cell phone these days. Just a thought that maybe because quite a few are missing and doesn't tell you how to use equipment.
Sycamore's exercise more.
There you go.
Feel like you're at that branding. Anyone else? Hey. Go ahead, Carly.
Okay, moving on to economic development. So new board of directors, I have Director Dale's and Director Wegler here with us. We have a very active, very passionate board. I'm so thrilled to be working with such amazing professionals from a, you know, a varied skill set. So they've given me a lot of opportunity for learning opportunities and and it's been great to see them work in fresh eyes and fresh perspective. We also the board appointed a new tourism advisory committee. So it's, again, it's not like a large group, very passionate group. So as soon as we get finished with this MRDT report, we're gonna have another meeting and discuss any last-minute details heading into summer, and then really lean on the tourism advisory committee as we plan MRDT for twenty twenty. Broadband update. So I did speak with Jeremy. There's a few details that he is going to be presenting to Tim, and we're going to explore whether the project is feasible. So we're still working through the nuts and bolts and the specific logistics on costing, et cetera. The new launch of the Shu Shua Work Course Up. So this has been a pretty big project over the last year. It came from a workforce roundtable committee that is spearheaded by myself, Lanithic from Samarm Economic Development, John Lee from Shu Shua Economic Development, Rob Marshall from Community Futures, and the work BC team. And what we did was when we were trying to address the labor force challenge, how do we, as a region, figure out what we're doing and how we can support it? And from that, we came up with the idea of really catering a website that is specific to local businesses and local employees searching for jobs. And from this is our Shu Shua Club. And so for businesses, the law And so for businesses, a lot of our businesses in the region are pre-operated. They don't have their own HR department. So when they put out a job post through Work BC or indeed, they're getting fifty resumes coming from India and twenty coming from, you know, somewhere else around the world, and it's hard for them to work through. So this site, um, we all, um, Open Up and College Tour is also a part of this from an in-kind perspective with their trade and we're working with them in terms of uh, job theirs, et cetera. But it's it's basically fine tuning the ability for uh, the District of Sickmoose to post for a job and it catering to Shushua employees. So again, all of our businesses will start seeing the marketing campaign that's going out starting tomorrow from a social media perspective, and then I'll be reaching out personally to businesses. RC has tagged a lot of the businesses that are Sickmoose based and added them into, they're slowly starting to add them into the job board. But it's very simple. Um, I worked with Shawna to just go through a test project and she signed up for an account, said it was super easy to be down some little pain points, which was great. But eventually, uh, if you're an employee looking for a local job, you can come in here and it's very specific in terms of regional. What this will do as well is we can start sharing this with communities like Revelstoke. Um, we can look at opportunities based on like click throughs and where employees are really starting to look at things about staff sharing. So um, working with communities that might have different seasons than us, if our summer season can, you know, accommodate some winter staff that Revelstoke doesn't want to use, let's start figuring out ways that we can shift them between. So getting other communities pointed in this direction to share with their staff to hopefully entice them to stay and not go back to Australia or other communities or other countries, sorry, where they they've come from. So I invite you all, I can send out the link. It is, if you just Google Shushua Workforce Hub, please take a peek. I welcome any and all feedback, especially from a business perspective. And again, there'll be uh, marketing that's going out that'll be very specific. Um, and I'm open to to questions from the businesses and will help them get uh, the accounts so that they can post jobs. Uh, the Rural Northern Immigration Pilot Program that we were accepted into, I think we now have six businesses in Sickmoose that are actively going through training and and taking advantage of this. So really positive, uh, Jennifer Cousy, who's part of Community Futures, is our local liaison. And she said that it's been all positives coming from the businesses and their experiences. So it's looking very good as a pilot project that um, it will hopefully move forward. And then uh, I put forward a grant to do the community profile and investment package. I actually have a meeting at Freedom to go over the application. They will be awarding these particular hundred percent funded grants at the end of this month. Upcoming initiatives. So um, looking at securing some staff support to help with a variety of administrative duties, freeing me some uh, freeing up some of my time, sorry, to focus on more of the bigger picture on both tourism and economic development initiatives. We just established that we are doing a business walk as a development corporation on June first. I'll be sent, sorry, I built this last week. So the notice will be sent out on Friday. Um, inviting Mayor and Council if they would like to participate, but we are going to be tackling a list of new businesses and and taking data from our strategic plan on businesses that weren't too, you know, happy about where their position was in Sickmoose, whether they were feeling like they were going to have to shut down because of staffing or challenges. We're going to focus on it, um, going in personally, talking to a lot of those businesses. So our development corporation board is going to team up and and take a list of pre-planned questions and just go out and get into the community and start talking, you know, business and seeing what they need. Um, we've got some board members that are going to be attending the mayor's breakfast on June sixth. Uh, another goal now that I'll be having some staff support with the administrative duties will be to start building the DOSDC social media presence. So we've got a very strong tourism presence. Now we're going to look at uh, making sure that our debt corp has that equally strong presence from a business perspective. Uh, some of the questions that we're going to be asking on our business walks are what type of business marketing sessions we can as a development corporation support our local businesses with, things like digital presence, e-commerce, grant writing, branding and marketing, succession planning, which was uh, something that was identified last year, and then emergency preparedness. We're doing the shoe accommodated development program. This is one that we did last February. Was the wrong month for Sickmoose, so I'm going to be working with Sage. We already have the assets in terms of social media and websites. So we're going to review this and see how this could benefit us from an accommodator attraction program in September, October, November. And then, as you guys know, Salmon Arm was awarded the BC fifty-five plus game. So part of our letter of support to Salmon Arm was that we would have amenities and hotel and accommodations for them so that they could be successful in their bid. So we will now, I believe they're just nailing down the particular sports that they have. Once we know that, we'll know what amenities we need to, they need to come to Sickmoose and ask for, as well as we can start letting our accommodators know to start walking out um, rooms. We will be leveraging houseboat companies as well, because I think that would be a really cool experience for these athletes to potentially extend their trip. So come stay on a houseboat, compete, and then you know, finish off with the holidays. I think we have some really cool marketing initiatives built into this um, event that's coming, that's coming, part of it. Um, this is just a peek at what you guys will start seeing in terms of our Workforce Hub promotion starting tomorrow. So we've got a very nice clean brand and we've got some video reels, et cetera. So uh, it it should make it very simple for businesses to join this and use this as an asset. That is it for economic development.
Questions, counsel?
Good job, Gary.
I um I have a couple. So the Northern Immigration Program, uh, which we just was, you know, on the radar right before, like a couple of years ago, a year and a half. Um, you can see it's moving, the the speed of being able to bring workers in is a lot quicker now because we are placing some in Sickmoose. So that is, uh, that's pretty exciting considering like, uh, just a a year ago, not even a year ago, the program was put in place. So that is exciting. Um. Uh, has the active considered a board, like a um, a board, um, a site, a link to a board of businesses that we are looking for in Sickmoose, businesses that we don't have here, like a shout out to um owners of, you know, as an example, a laundromat. I'm just, I think there's one going in now, but prior to that, you know, Sickmoose is looking for folks that are interested in in um, opening a laundromat business and then attaching some of the great things that Sickmoose offers to that, you know. So I don't know if that's something that is on your radar or not, but there are some businesses that we certainly could use in in Sickmoose that we can go digging for, maybe fishing for.
Through the chair, um, I think what I'll do is I'll add that to the list of things. If I am grant the company genets marketing, that's going to be doing the data acquisition for the investment package. I could ask them to layer that in and see if there's if they've ever worked with data like that where they would be able to easily see or collect something. Um, it could be a question we ask to the businesses, what if you, you know, they could see a complimentary business in town, what would that be?
Yeah, but yeah, good idea. Yeah, for sure. Anyone else? Everyone's good. Kate, thank you, Carly. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to move on. Um, so we're gonna go to a operations manager report. So Darrell, you're up. Take it away.
Hey. Not sure how I threw the short straw, but following Carly is never my favorite thing. It's always good. Okay, so I I just threw a few things together. Uh, we have a lot of things on the go right now. Uh, some of them are for information. Some of them, I'm hoping to get a little bit of direction. Um. And some of them will require some direction a little further down the road. It's just a bit of a heads up. So lots of stuff going on. Uh, we haven't talked about the Kerr Road Culver in a long time, so I thought I'd throw that up there. And we're still on schedule for that. Uh, beginning of August. We've done some paving through town. We've done quite a bit of patching. Not sure why this is.
No, we just. It's good now.
It's good now. Uh, so Mayor Road got paved uh, completely. And we've got white pines done. Now we were looking for an active transportation lane. It's it's not all we had hoped it would be. So they're doing some remediation, some some additional ditch work and it will be widened uh, in the future. So it's been pushed back a little bit, but it's, we'll get it done. Capel East, we got that done from Gil to the end of the road as well. So got a good chunk of paving done this year. This was the location that we had tentatively selected as one of the better spots for the pump track. I've been in touch with the designers of the pump track company, uh, Velo Solutions. They initially sent us a couple of design options just from afar to show us what they can do. And so they 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 can custom make it to a certain area. Um. This is something that I will need direction on in the next little while. I've got a meeting scheduled with the designers. We're going to go down to Finneson Park. And I'll put an email out and if any of council's interested in joining, it'd be great. Uh, we're going to look at that one location that we had highlighted, and I'd also like to kind of look by the caboose by the highway, see if there's any way we could work it in there. But what we're going to need to refine a little bit is what scope we want. So I think we're all of the same mind and the the community spoke pretty loudly. They wanted to see a pump track. So are we happy with a community pump track? Or do we want to go for national style or a world style? Or we're going to have to refine our ask. So obviously there'll be cost implications with all. Some of the more modest tracks that can be pretty competitive are still within the budget that we've talked about. But if we want to upsize it and invite the world to her thing, so that'll be coming up soon. Pickleball is all the rage all over the place. I've never played pickleball, but I was, I was late getting on board with like deep fried pickles and and they're they're amazing. Still hope for me. Uh, we had booked at a bunch of places that had some really cool pickleball courts. And we committed or we committed in in the past year to work with the Pickleball Association, see if we could convert a tennis court. This was the proposed layout that we came up with early this spring. And we'd measured some stuff out. I won't get into the into the details too much, but the tennis courts are a little bit more narrow than and they should be, I guess. So we kind of threw a few things off. This is what we came up with for a proposal. This being a tennis court, this this net representing another tennis court, we were going to take over the far tennis court and put four pickleball courts in. So they would be uh, they'd be designated just for pickleball. They'd be painted for pickleball, not for tennis. So we would give them those four, came in at that that kind of a cost. Uh, and so we had a plan and I went out looking for somebody who could do the, it's not just painting, it's resurfacing. There's acrylic and different layers of things. So it's, there's a little bit more to it than just rolling down paint. This was what we came up with as a plan. It's a little tight in here to the fence line uh, on the on the west side. Gives them four feet, which is pretty much equal to eight feet between courts because you don't have anybody coming at it yet. So they said they could live with that. We've got we've got money in place for this. We we can pull this off. So I started getting the the ball rolling and got somebody to come up the surface and uh then the Pickleball Association got back to me, said, you know, in a perfect world. And so they're proposing this for a perfect world. So this was the initial plan. They're just suggesting we could have a little more room between courts if we took over two of the tennis courts. So the cost is about a third more. There's not a whole lot of savings. So we're looking at about twenty-one to get all of these done. But it would transform that that tennis court into what's fast growing and really getting used a lot. So I think they would look really good. They'd be well received. Um, operationally, I think we were pretty comfortable covering these four. I have informal commitments from the Pickleball Association that they would contribute. I've I've heard numbers up to about five thousand, which should almost be the difference. So if council's okay with that and we pursue recouping some of that money, I guess I'm looking for some direction if I should go.
So Darrell, can we, we'll take some counselor questions here. Counselor McCabe?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I was asked to meet with uh Gordon Gordon Oliver. And so I I did, yeah. Tried to reach out with Gordon because it's his all go and get me to step on your toes here. Um, and yeah, they they pitched the six courts to me. And to me, that made sense because on the left hand side, that number one court, uh, you move from four feet to eight foot spacing, right? Which is closer to um the standard for a court. And 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 the spacing in between would be close to to the standards also. So we'd have um six courts that would be to, let's say, code or standard um for for pickleball. And I've never played pickleball either. I bought two rackets and I have some balls. And so the club has about, I have some notes here. Uh, they're projecting over a hundred members in their club for this year. And uh there is no tennis club in town, no tennis association to my knowledge. So um if if we were to leave the one tennis court, it it wouldn't interfere with the six pickleball courts and Salmon Arm is exploding with pickleball. They have wait lists for for their club and courts. Um, I did get an email saying you would pitch in twenty-five hundred bucks, twenty-five hundred bucks. I think you were CC'd on that.
On that one, yeah.
And but they're just apparently new club and they're willing to do fundraising to put some skin in the game. Uh, I I think for them, we think ahead, like First Nations think, you know, they make decisions based on seven generations or something. I I think uh, six pickleball courts would be more utilized than four courts and two tennis.
Yeah, through through the chair, the the four courts in my mind was just a nice transition. Uh, you know, thinking that we might get some pushback from tennis, but really the the tennis courts are not being utilized. So.
Counselor Beach and then Counsel Bailey.
Um, yeah, as long as there's a tennis court left, there are people who beat us in town, but yeah, there's still club. And pickleball is going crazy. So I don't know. That makes sense, but there has to be a tennis court.
Counsel Bailey?
Yeah, I guess that would leave one tennis court.
Yes, it would.
So, yeah, I mean, I, they talked to me as well on All Day Monday in the restaurant. So they were there and I I I sat down. I mean, the numbers are impressive in terms of the people that are moving towards pickle pickleball. It's clearly the sport that's growing, where you see kind of tennis is maybe not the end thing anymore. I don't know. I I don't play either. I played tennis once and I I just got ticked off with it. But it's kind of like golf. For me, it just doesn't do anything. Um, I guess the only thing is just the cost difference is, you know, my my question there would be, you know, it's going to what cost twenty thousand or something around there? You know, do we have the extra money in the budget to cover that in case they can't come up with a full five thousand?
I'm gonna look over there.
I mean, we do have our recreation reserve where we can the budget is our best guess when we when we do it. Things like this come up. That council wants to approve. I mean, there is room. Um, that's why we have reserves too, so.
And I I guess my final point on this is like, I think recreation's there for to be maximized and used. So this is going to get that space to a maximum use and that's what people want. I'm for it and it does sound, their numbers sound quite impressive, like a hundred members. And yeah, I mean, that's all I hear about is pickleball. I have to go watch a game, I guess.
Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, um, I'm for this, especially with a tennis court being left. Um. Salmon Arm is full, Revelstoke's pretty full. It actually will bring people into town, I think, because they can't get on the courts that they want to uh, in their own communities. So they will come to to use the courts. Um. So I I think it's a great thing for our town. I don't think besides minor hockey, which I don't even think we've got a hundred people there, we have any club in town that has that kind of a membership. Um, so we should be supporting them and drawing people in.
Thank you, Counsel Bushell.
Yes, thank you, uh, through the chair. I I really think that if we don't do, six of them will be doing the other two in a in a year anyways. You know, I've been talking to Deb. She's on a hundred days, but she emailed me a couple nights ago and and again last night and and then, I mean, their whole team really wants to contribute if they can. So I think if we work with them and they, you know, if they can pay the twenty-five hundred this year and maybe a little bit next year or something just to get it done, I think we should work with them. And the serious tennis players that we had in town or have in town, they, a lot of them, they all go to the tennis court at Salmon Arm anyways. So, you know, you don't see a lot of people playing tennis here, you know, see a few people, but not a lot. And So, you know, you don't see a lot of people playing tennis here, you know, see a few people, but not a lot. And I think it would be I think it would be, I think it'd be good for the community.
Councillor New Grandpa Evans, congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, I I agree. I I think we, if we can tell them firm twenty five hundred dollars, take the rest out of our excess and they can contribute next time towards a future project. Let's do it right because we'll probably have tournaments and we'll be able to because it's spaced properly and it's going to be a draw and make us money as a town and be a draw for people. And as long as we have a good tennis court and it's a beautiful court. So I agree, I probably got to go watch a game to see how this popular sport is.
Team building, Councillor Bushel, yes, we need to counsel.
One thing I forgot to mention. I don't know if we have any contact with Tellus, but there's a little vacant spot there that Tellus has, right beside the Tellus building in the tennis courts. And there isn't a lot of parking at the pickleball court unless you go, you know, you park in the school zone. So I didn't know if we could ever make some kind of deal with tenant to clear kind of clear that, you know, we could clear that and gravel it or something for now. You know, put a gate in there and and people could even be there on on angle parking or whatever. It would be, it would really help out the area, I think.
Good idea.
Councillor Beach, to the Chair, I just want to respond to Gord's comment about people who play tennis can go to Salmon Arm. I don't think people here should have to go to Salmon Arm to play tennis. And the only reason that they have been going to Salmon Arm was the condition of the tennis court. Okay, so we need to do something about that.
I didn't mean that. Real serious ones. Are you still going to Salmon Arm?
To play with competition, yeah.
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 But still, it's like, it's like building a bowl without building the skill, the sort of something down in town to build skills for the bowl up at Owl Head, right? It's the same idea. We need to start somewhere. We need to have those courts.
Okay, oh, yes. Thanks, everyone. Kay, Darrell, carry on.
Hey, so we're, you think in summary, we're good with six?
I think everyone's. Yeah, I think we're good with six. Sorry, thank you.
Sleep.
Down with tennis.
Just later. Okay, yeah, really quickly on the Owl Head Bike Park, we've done everything we need to. I guess the big news is there's a new case manager looking after applications. So I've reached out and I'm waiting some feedback. This is from our finance meeting earlier this year. We identified a couple of vehicles. So the the RFPs have gone out for that that plow truck, the two ton plow truck and for the UTV. So those have paired and sent out. We've also prepared an ad for the portable washroom unit showers. So that's been sent out. There were some interested parties. We made sure they got this info. So based on some of the numbers we are talking in the in the finance meetings, we've held a reserve, gotten some calls. What's the reserve? Said, I'll tell you if you don't meet it. So give us give us something in writing. So we're trying to solicit some bids now on this posted. Capelsby Water, Water Main Replacement, going to be a big job. That RFP is out now. So we're going to start getting all kinds of questions. I'm going to need a little bit of direction on this one. So we've taken our big tent and we've run it down to Kelowna where we purchased it from from Avalon. It's sixty by forty feet. It's the big one in the beach park where we've had the beer gardens and we put that thing up and it sat all year. It's too big to move around and it's it's a ton of work. It's four guys all day to get that thing up. So we've had requests to move it to other events, but logistically, it doesn't, it's it's too difficult to be moving that tent around and it's hard to put up in that, you know, holes. We've actually poked some holes in the fabric, in the canvas. So it's in getting a few repairs. And they have all kinds of tents coming and going. And I just want to throw it out there. Would we entertain getting a couple more twenty by twenties that we could logistically move around? I know Canada Day is coming. We've got a beer gardens in Findleson. We've got a beer gardens in the beach park on the same weekend. It'd be nice to be able to move some tents around. We have two twenty by twenties. If we had two more, we could do anything. We can have big events, small events. We could have one set up for the swim instructors when they're frying on the beach in July. It's just, it's nice to have that ability. So, I mean, I wouldn't give it away, but is that something we could look at doing?
Kate, Councillor Bailey?
I would say yes. I mean, I put up, well, I've had an event where I put up sixty by four. It it's it's a nightmare. So, I mean, you can always cobble together twenty by twenties if you need the space and it's just going to be so much easier for you guys. And it allows you a ton of flexibility. You probably don't have now.
Thanks, Councillor Evans.
Thanks, Councillor Chair. I mean, we could sell it and buy the ones you need.
And that is an option. I mean, they could, they've got it now. They're doing some repairs on the roof. And they they said they could explore sales for us or tradesies or something. So if.
Councillor Bushel?
Yeah, I agree with Councillor Bailey. It's 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 a big tent and, yeah, I've I've helped put up it. And it just, every time you put it up, you end up with another rip. There there it's a big problem. So I would entertain trading.
Or a broken water line.
Councillor McCabe?
Yeah. Walk them out for a couple of small ones, sure.
Yeah. Well, twenty by twenties are, they're pretty big.
Smaller.
Yeah, smaller. Yeah. Okay, great.
So just tossing this out, would would council entertain just putting it sixty at forty at Beach Park, leaving it there and then having a couple rotating tents?
We currently do have two rotating tents in addition to the sixty by forty. So I guess my proposal is that we convert them all to twenty by twenties. So the guys can put them up, down.
So but if you have the sixty by forty put up in the beach park already.
It stays.
It stays.
Yeah.
And you just use the other ones for other, I guess, that could be an option as well because I know I've I've seen it pretty busy
Yeah.
with music in the park, that big and and all the chairs, everybody stuffed underneath it. So that space is used. So I'm just, I I wonder if there's value to just putting it up, keeping it in the beach park and then putting up the smaller ones when you need them. Go ahead, Councillor Bailey.
You could achieve the same service area with twenty by twenties. You just cobble them together. I mean, I guess the only downside is you would have some posts where there might not be, well, there's probably posts.
And we've set that we have side by side and and you get a nice big area. Yeah.
Sure. I was just thinking more of time. If it's up, you don't need to worry about it. You can it's there already. Don't take two, take a team, put two tents together to move it to the beach park. That's all I'm considering is a bit of time. Dr. Evans, Councillor Evans.
Dr. Evans is in the house. No, actually, no, I I'm good.
Councillor Beach?
I see your point. Because we put the we put the large tent up for the start of music in the park, which runs from what mid-July through to?
July first?
July and August.
Yeah, July and August, pretty much. It is stationary. Not trying to move that one around. But are you saying that we could still need two more of the more mobile ones in addition to what we have?
We could definitely use two more of the mobile ones.
Okay. But I mean, I think the big one stays stationary for the summer and then you take it down. And I know there are things up and down, even the small ones are. So they all are.
The the little ones are a lot easier. Like even for cleaning or repairing or any, we can't do that stuff very well. I mean, we had to get a genie lift in and we caused damage to power washing it. So nice stuff, stuff that we can work with and move around.
To the Chair, I guess it depends on once we spend money on the big tent, how much we could sell it for. I don't know.
I think six years ago, seven years ago, we purchased it and it was, I think it was sixteen thousand back then. So I guess in my mind, you know, if you get a couple twenty by twenties in good shape, we'd be doing fairly well. We'd be doing fairly well.
Councillor Evans?
I I think Darrell wants to trade it for two.
As well, I'm trying to steer away.
What he needs to do with two that he would get for the one.
I think we're all picking up what he's laying down. Councillor Bushel?
He's a bit of a beast.
I was just going to ask if you have room for storing all these tents. If you, if we ended up getting two more and yeah, still keep the forty by sixty, do you have room for all these? If we don't pay, I I thought we paid more for sixty by forty.
No.
Probably not going to get a lot of money for sixty by forty. Maybe we should keep it and just leave it in one place and buy two more up in the recreation.
Councillor Rich and then Councillor Evans.
To the Chair, what does maintenance on the big tent cost us?
We haven't spent a lot on maintenance. This year, we're taking it in to get some repairs and a good cleaning. It'll be fourteen hundred dollars. Yeah.
Councillor Evans?
Thank you, Councillor Chair. How much cost what twenty by twenties each?
I don't know. I that's a kind of seeking permission to even deal.
You'd probably get ten grand for that one, I would think.
Councillor Bailey?
I'm just going to take a position. I'm for the twenty by twenty tents. I think Darrell needs some some directions. So whichever way council wants to go, I think twenty by twenty tents will get the same surface areas and give us all the functionality, but be easier for them to handle. Yeah.
Councillor McCabe?
I think Darrell's planning, same staff doesn't want to deal with that big tent. So let's let Darrell swap it out for whatever we can get for a couple of twenty by twenties.
Sure. But what if you had the opportunity, you'd only put it out up a once and not have to worry about it for the rest of the season?
Doesn't want that.
See, the problem is they're going to be running around with two tents everywhere you go now.
We would leave them up. We would leave them up in in the beach park.
Yeah, but but if they needed to go to Finlayson.
Then it's so much easier to take twenty by twenties down.
But again, you could have the big one in the beach park. You know what, Darrell? I'm going to leave it with staff. Is everybody good with that? You make the decision. That's a pretty nice big tent. That's all I want to say. Anyway, being along.
I must throw that in.
Go ahead, Darrell. Continue.
Okay, so another odd one here, the daycare play equipment at at the daycare. So so Amar and his team have come in and they're they're doing their thing. They've got a grant. They're looking to put some investment into that building and bring in a couple of playgrounds for the for the kids, for play parks. Play equipment. So the one that's there now is not compliant for little kids and they're looking to get licensed for little kids. So he has no need for that. In fact, he needs to get it out of there. So I start thinking, where else can we put a little playground, little play equipment? I can't really think of anywhere that needs it. We just did one at the beach park. Lions Park has some stuff there. The exercise, not the exercise, the the little Finlessen Park Playground, it's it's not in bad shape. So I know the elementary school's been fundraising and wanting a little playground. Are, is council okay if we talk to them and see if they're interested? I know Amar's got no use for it. We can't use it. They would be on the hook for removing it and installing it. I might have to storage store it at PW for a short time, but we wouldn't be involved.
Kate, Councillor Rich?
And you know, I love the elementary school and fundraising. And that would be my second choice. My first choice would actually be to talk to Corey Miller. Or sorry, to the Chair. They, Gordon and I met with Corey and Mary a couple of months ago and they are actually looking like the the Finlessen Park Playground actually does need upgrades and it is quite old. And Corey and I have talked about different places that they can start looking for grants and stuff. I don't know the playground at at the daycare or or what levels it is. But my first, in my opinion, the first thing would to do to do is to see if talk to Corey and Mary and see if it's a fit for Finlessen. I guess a lot of that equipment is quite old and it is something that they've actually approached about starting to look for funding to to do that. And then the second place, of course, is the Parkview has worked like crazy over the last four years fundraising for equipment. And they're desperate that the the elementary school equipment's very old and and we just don't have enough for the number of kids now. And our population at the elementary school has gone up almost fifty kids in two years. And it just isn't in the school budgets. I think either would be great, but I would I would suggest that we maybe check Finlessen just because it's a family park, but if people play at school anyways, weekdays, so it could go either way and be used. It's just if if the little kids can't use the elementary school when school's in. Right, like the the daycare. I don't know. That's just me.
Anyone else? Councillor Bailey?
Well, I I agree with that idea. I mean, the other thing we were talking about in our perks plan is that we do have some pieces of land around that are not being used that we have designated as parks. Maybe we can look at putting it there. I'll leave the suitability up to you guys and staff, but I'm sure there's some way we can use it. But I I'm fine with any of these. As long as it's still in usable shape, then we should find a way to add to our amenities rather than just take it away is my point.
Well, I think everyone's good with leaving it with staff and you making the decision. Thanks, Darrell.
Okay, just a few quick things here. So we we're on a program to switch our ornamental lights up to LED. We're in the process of getting quotes to do that. Had some dust control through town last week, so dust controls completed now. Line painting is half done. We've got the short paint line painter in and the long line guy Cummings. We're both half done. We're troubleshooting some some lift station power issues under the sidewalk between Young Street and Moore Lift Station. We're we're monitoring that right now. We're blowing fuses. So just something on the radar. Biofuel is progressing into June. Substantial completion is targeted. And I've been in discussions with MOE regarding our wastewater plant and trying to figure out the next steps for that. So that's it's a a bit of a maze to work through, but we're we're in discussions.
Definitely on your radar though, because as our as our community grows, we need to make sure that we do have a a plan in place for what's going to happen next. The next phase is council, do you have any questions for Darrell?
Councillor Bushel?
Through the Chair, Darrell, on the line painting, I did mention before, and I was out yesterday by Eagle River Golf Course on the Husky Fledge Road. And without lines on there, those trucks are still parking right in the middle of the road. You'll park and if they had lines there, they'd realize the road and not, you know, they don't, they think it's a parking lot. So if we put a a center line down that road and around on near road right in front of the car wash, because there's no lines on any of those roads, then they wouldn't classify the middle of the road as a parking.
Can it center line or white shoulder?
Or either either or, but they're parking side by side, right in the middle of the road. You gotta actually drive around them to to move by them.
Hey, thanks.
Councillor Rich?
Through the Chair, can you tell us what's happening over on CPR Hill? Are they shoring that up or?
CPR Hill? So with the hydro activity?
There just is a lot of activity over there and I wasn't sure if that was part of the, it's not going to all fall into the lake or that's hydro.
Can't promise that. We have been speaking with Hydro and MOTI is kind of leading the charge. They've gone in, done some grubbing and taken a bunch of the trees out. Hydro has a plan to to be on that side on the west side for the next five, six weeks. Sounds like they're parking in the back of Public Works right now with their their vehicles. So they're not driving to Salmon Arm every day. They're heading out to the the west of the channel. They're they're going to do those poles coming through. What else can I tell you? There's there's a turnoff, a big shut off coming in September where we're going to be out of power for, I think, eight hours, they're saying, but as we get closer, I'll give you more information. But yeah, they're they're busy doing their thing and just getting the polls advice.
Awesome. Any other questions, Councillor McCabe?
A small dog park request. I get to go to the dog park with it. I guess a couple of dogs are getting out and it's a great dog park and the crews does a great job of mowing it, looking after it. Had a couple of people ask me if you could put a sign up at the front gate saying, warning, not fully enclosed. Because some when tourists use it and go in and take their dogs off leash, they don't realize that it's not fully fenced. I mean, you already have a sign saying, you know, use it, you don't risk sort of thing, but maybe specific not too detailed, just warning, not fully enclosed. Not too detailed, just warning, not fully enclosed.
I agree. No, I no, I agree. I've had the complaints as well, so I think it's something that we need to to have a look at. Anyone else? Thanks, Daryl. That was always fun. Okay, let's move on. Um, CEO Bennett.
Yes.
It's all yours.
Get to follow Daryl. I know, I know. First, because he's so amazing, and mine's really quick. It's just a verbal update, so as much as I do love a PowerPoint today, I'm passing on it. Um, and Daryl has stolen some of my thunder here, but that's okay. Um, so daycare, just a quick update on that. I met with Amar and Karen on May eighteenth. Uh, they're planning on, uh, doing renovations to that building between August and December. Uh, so they're looking at an alternative spot to run their daycare in the meantime. So one of the options is potentially. Uh, where we run Kids Club up in Finlessen Place, uh, at Finlessen Place. Um, and they're also looking at another church, um, as well to to maybe see if they can run there. So we're working with them. They prefer the church first, so because their licensing has to approve everything as well. So I'm just giving you the heads up on that. Um, and then we'll look to transfer the Kids Club over in the new year. So January of twenty twenty four, our Kids Club will move into the new daycare once it's all. That's what we're shooting for. Um, housing, uh, so exciting step on the housing front. You'll see, uh, later on today. Uh, at the regular meeting, we have a preliminary site plan, uh, for the Eagle Valley, uh, Seniors Housing Society project. So we've had multiple, uh, meetings with Maureen and Craig, uh, going over zoning, subdivision, all those kind of goodies. Uh, so we have a preliminary site plan that, oh, if if council approves it, uh, later today, then we can start on the subdivision process. I've been working on expression of interest for the remaining land on Main Street to do, uh, uh, mixed use, commercial residential, as well as. Um, affordable, uh, family housing on the back, um, portion of it. So I'm working on that. And I'm hopeful, uh, to have it at the June seventh committee of the whole, so council can all look at that. Because what that pa- that package is really important, um, because. We're asking for somebody to build, like, what does council want to see on that property? So I'm putting together what I what I think everybody wants there, and then so. I want everybody to scrutinize that expression of interest because it's really, really important. That's prime location. We need commercial and housing there. So that will be at the next committee of the whole, but we're making great steps forward on the other project. And hopefully that will be, um, starting to move dirt there in April of twenty twenty four for the other, um, thirty six units. So that's, um, exciting. Um, Brun Bridge, so on May fifteenth, uh, Daryl and myself had a meeting with MOTI. Uh, we went over scheduling. Um, so right now they're working on permits, inevitable water permits, water main permits, property agreements. Um, and as well as a traffic management stra- uh, strategy, and what they're really doing is. Um, during, um, B C Hydro Works, they're really monitoring, um, traffic. And that will help them come up with a strategy for next summer, uh, for when everything is all all moving along. So their goal still is to have it tendered this late this fall. So that that's what they're still telling us and and same time. Um, just prior to them tendering, the goal is, uh, for us to put out an RFP for parking replacement as well. So over the next few months, we'll see how things progress. Um, they're gonna be coming to council probably for an update. Once they have a few more things checked off, they're thinking maybe in August, they'll be coming back to council for an update. But we're trying to stay in contact with them and do monthly meetings just to make sure everything is is, you know. Just to get an an update on that. Um, anything else that they? Hmm. Oh, yes. And then we talked about the houseboat and all that property, if they have any use for it. Um, they think that they would probably have a use for it, so I think at this point, we're we're just gonna wait. We're not gonna say, hey, anybody interested in using the houseboat? Because it doesn't make any sense. It would be a good landing area to keep traffic out of. It's already gonna be so congested, so, um, they're gonna get back to us on that. Maybe we can lease out, uh, the houseboat for an office space or something for them. So, so that's kind of where they are on that. Uh, as well, we met with, uh, B C Hydro on May nineteenth, like Daryl said, uh, scheduled outage on, uh, September twenty fourth, which is a Sunday. So we're for eight hours of power, so we're hopefully, we're trying to get them to work at night. So it's not such an issue potentially, specifically with our lift stations and all the requirements. I mean, there's never a good time to have a community-wide outage of eight hours, so we will keep you posted on that. Um, they're still planning on doing the intermittent closing of the channel on the July nineteenth. And they've been putting out some some information on that, communicating with people. So and we do have a contact there. So if anybody has any issues, please reach out to me and then we can, uh, contact him. His name is David Cooper. He's the community relations, uh, individual. And he also, um, uh, is willing to, and we brought up, uh, our discussion with Shushab Villas. And if they have any concerns, and he's a good contact point, because right now it's the hydro works that is occurring, right? So so we've we've, and when we met with MOTI as well, we did bring up the Villas and just to make sure that everybody's communicating. Uh, on, uh, May seventeenth, we had a lovely visit with, uh, three staff members from the Minister of Municipal Affairs. Wanted to look at some of our sites where we've received grant funding for, so we looked at the Healing Center site. Uh, they were very excited to see that materialize. Uh, they've never seen, uh, where it's located, but we've been communicating with these individuals for a while, so they're very excited about it. And we also went and took a look at the biofuel facility. Uh, so that was something that, uh, Daryl and I took them on a tour. Um, and just an FYI, uh, later on today, uh, there's an agreement. Um, we have a contract building inspector, uh, named Scott Beck. He's gonna be tentatively working on Tuesdays and Fridays, two days a week as a as a contractor, not as an employee. Uh, he lives out of, I believe he's, um, close by. I think he's in Salmon Arm, and he, um, is level one building inspector. So so we've got that covered. Um, and then, um, in case anybody doesn't know already, uh, Colleen and I are going to FCM. We're leaving tomorrow and we won't be back until Monday sometime, so. We'll be busy, but we won't be in town. And that's it for me.
Thanks, Kelly. Thanks for thanks for that. Any questions to CEO Bennett? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, with the Sunday Hydro outage, I mean, you might want to just remind them we're still kind of in tourism season at that point. Sunday would be a lot worse than a Monday, I would say, for hotel accommodators, restaurants, all these other folks. So it might just be, maybe they're thinking Sunday's gonna be less.
Yeah.
Impactful, but I I think for our purposes and town, probably Sunday's more impactful than maybe a Monday. But.
Monday night.
Yeah, something like that.
Go ahead, Council Rich.
Through the chair, just September twenty fourth, school's in. So now you're dealing with people not having daycare, or like if it's if it's a Monday. Um, the schools close and and that's that's about, and people have, I know, but. People have little kids and then they have to, like that school just okay.
Yeah.
It's it's a whole ballgame. It'd be great if we could do it in there, but Mondays for. For schools are, it's over three hundred people.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
No, they can't have a snow day. That's not the way that we're.
Girls come into the restaurant, Ian.
Yeah, they're gonna be.
I I guess my point is just that Sundays would be a pretty disruptive day. I mean, I don't know. Yeah, I guess it's all gonna be disruptive, but I mean, you're you're definitely gonna hear from businesses. Uh, Sunday shutdown is gonna be a problem. It's gonna be a problem for hotels. It's gonna be a problem for a lot of, a lot of businesses. But in my experience, Hydro just picks the date anyway, so.
So it's eight hours. Can they not schedule us after ten P M?
That's what we're working on. Yeah, we've we've made that clear.
Council Bushel. Oh, okay. Anyone else?
Thank you very much, Kelly. Um, that's really, those are really, I'm happy about the Eagle Valley Senior Housing Society and that. Making some progress and moving forward, and I'm also happy about, uh, that us moving forward with Mergeville. On Main Street and multifamily as well above that. So that's really exciting news. Excellent. Okay.
Thank you.
So moving forward, we've got proposed roads and boulevards by law number one zero four three, eight twenty three. Sarah, take it away. So excuse me, Sarah. Would you, would you want us to wait until after you're done, or if council wants to ask questions during your presentation? Are you good with that?
All right. So we've been working on a few different bylaws lately, uh, mostly tied to updating our application forms. So this would be one of the key reasons why, uh, staff started looking at, uh, current traffic bylaw. And why we've proposed, uh, a replacement bylaw called the Roads and Boulevard bylaw. Um, so part of that process, we also looked at the recent new bylaws that were adopted. As well as, uh, strategies and plans that would have implications for this bylaw as well. So the new zone bylaw, for example, um, our housing strategy, uh, and our active transportation plan. So some of the proposed changes, so I think a key one here.
Get you to speak into the mic a little bit louder, please.
Is that a little better?
Yeah, nice. Get a little closer, nice and loud, so. There you have.
Really getting close to this thing. All right. Uh, so I think a big change with this bylaw is is mostly the organization. So it was reorganized to make it easier to work with and easier to find what you're looking for. Um, some other changes are, there are now some maximum widths for driveways that have been implemented in there. So our existing bylaw had a couple, but not the whole range of different sizes before, and there have been. The driveways and residential areas, for example. Uh, so there are now some maximums up there. Uh, it has clarified language around road drainage. Uh, the district works on a largely rural standard when it comes to dealing with. Uh, draining our roads to keep them safe, uh, which means that we use stitches. And there's been issues with those stitches being filled in, which can impact, uh, how the road drains. So there's clearer language in there now to provide some clarity and make it easier for people to understand. Um, the permitting processes have been streamlined. So for example, a few different permit types that are also tied to business licensing. The there's some language in there to kind of defer that approval through, uh, whoever approved business licensing. But with sign off from the appropriate, uh, bylaw administrator, so in this case, that would be, uh, Mr. Simba. Um, active transportation considerations, so it now includes, uh, sidelines and sections. For active transportation corridors, for example. And also, um, some regulations for, uh, how you would go about using those after transportation corridors. There's also a language in here, uh, to update our bylaw enforcement language as well. Uh, so that we've adopted a few different bylaws that have updated bylaw enforcement language in them, so that's been carried over here. And then there's also language written in there for future updates to our bylaw enforcement tools, such as implementation of the bond system. Next slide, please. Thank you. Uh, so the structure here, the organization of the bylaws that are fresh. For ease of reference, plain language has been used here. Uh, the previous language used in the bylaw, um, was pretty open and a bit vague. Kind of on purpose, it's the way bylaws used to be written. These days, best practice is to use more acceptable plain language. To make it easier for people to understand. So this bylaw really does that. Uh, and then the other component is having clear regulations. So rather than leaving things so that it's more something that has to be interpreted. It's very clear and specific about what what that regulation is for. Uh, so I've also got on this slide here, uh, in the green box, this is sort of, this is our new bylaw structure. And the blue box is our current bylaw structure. So in terms of these kind of mind where you're looking for, there's there's fewer, uh, headings. Fewer places to look, uh, and will be easier to flip to when. Next slide, please. So what changes with the application process? This was really tied to our development approval processes. So the the roads and boulevards, our traffic bylaw, uh, is tied very closely to developments. In our community. So, um, you know, you don't just need development permits or building permits, but you also need permits for going and cutting open the road. Or boring under the road to put in servicing for new sites. Uh, you might need to shut down a sidewalk while you're doing facade upgrades for tech pedestrians. Uh, these types of things, so many permits for additional access. So, um, what we've done with this is consolidated all those, uh, permitting regulations into a schedule in the back of the bylaw. Which makes the need of the bylaw a little more accessible and easier to find things again. Um, we've also taken application forms out of there, which makes it a lot easier for staff to update them over. And they don't forget to open up the whole bylaw to come back and update or replace forms. Especially if there's, you know, we just need to update an email or a contact. Since that's a big one. Uh, the procedure in there now is a lot clearer. And the expectations of like what you would need to submit as part of an application. Or what you would need to do with your responsibility as a contractor in terms of, you know, impacting a road or a boulevard. Uh, around public safety or repair of, that's all very clear now. Um, so this will actually support if you was to do the development approval process in terms of straightlining it. Next slide. So another big piece here was the bylaw on expertise, and this is all around education and safety. So a big piece with having that plain language is that it makes it easier to educate people. Um, and having things more clearly understood helps with safety, because now everybody's operating under the same set of rules that they understand. Um. So the new language also supports implementation in the bond system, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, and the language for enforcement is now consistent with other newer bylaws that the district has adopted. Next slide. Over to you.
All right. Any questions, Council McCabe?
Yeah, thank you for all your work in that. That does look like an easier document. There's, uh, one question wants, nice, snow and ice in section. Section three. Section three point one two. Where we're making the owners now clean the sidewalks instead of the operation. So we have a snow and ice winter maintenance schedule that says. How they prioritize snow removal and how they approach sidewalks. So are we changing that? Or is there? What's going on there? Are we making the owners clean the sidewalks now?
No. Through the chair, one point or point one, one point one. The states of snow and ice will be managed in accordance with the snow and ice control policy. So our map that shows us, shows everybody where we go and and the limits and, you know, time limits in which we do it. That none of that changes. That's what we do. This is language, if anything should change, and we get to a point where. We might designate an area where, you know what, these residents are way out of, way away from the core, and we can't get there. They need to look after their own sidewalks. We have language for that kind of stuff, so it wouldn't be applicable to anybody. Today or tomorrow, but maybe down the road, that language could be used. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense, but the two documents contradict each other, I think. It it makes sense to have it in here now instead of adding it later, is what you're saying, I guess.
There there, yeah, through the chair, there's a few things in here that, you know, we've got a red curb for buses. Well, we don't have buses here now or yet. Doesn't mean we'd go looking to enforce that. Thank you through chain.
You're welcome, Council McCabe. Go ahead, Council Bailey.
Oh, I know it. Okay, um, I guess a couple of things. I would have liked to seen this document go to planning and development. Before it came here, just for for that extra look. I'd also like to have. You know, some, I mean, we just got that this week, so, uh, I'd like to get this out to some of the people in the development community as well. I know there's some concerns around sightlines that we've we've heard about. There there's, there's multiple layers of concern that. I'm kind of seeing with this that maybe impacts bylaw one thousand. Might impact the sighting provisions that we're we're talking about that are at planning and development. And it all just sort of seems to me that there's all these different things that are going at the same time that need to be. Kind of looked at together, that that they're not all just separate pieces. They all kind of work off of each other. So I'd like to take this back and have, I think, a little bit more study around it. And then literally figure out what are the individual changes that are happening here in terms of. I I notice there's some some, um, things like Council McCabe. things like Counselor McCabe just said, and there, there's, there's other things that I've only been able to pick up in the last couple of days as I haven't read completely the two documents. So a little bit more study, but then a little bit more understanding how this impacts on the other things that we're trying to fix. We're currently trying to fix a few things in bylaw 1,000 that were overlooked, that we're going back and we'll have to come to council later on. So that's kind of my, my comments around this. I don't think this is really ready for council at this point. That's my opinion. And I think it would benefit from having some more discussions around with planning and development as, as a component part. And maybe there's even a component part for, you know, other, other folks to look at it as well. So thanks, Matt.
Counsel Bailey, Counsel Bushel.
Thank you through the chair. I agree with the, and I, I already think it should have went to the planning committee first and like the zoning bylaw and all the other bylaws that we passed. It just, it's a big document and it needs more than just two weeks to, for me to understand it. So I just think it should, we should postpone it and it should go back to the planning committee and spend some time on it. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, thank you through chair. Couple of comments. So the new width to driveways is six meters for residential, I, I think you mentioned. And there's concerns about some ditches being filled in or future ditches that might be filled in. How are you approaching existing non-conformments? Are they going to be grandfathered? Are you going to be chasing down individual residents saying that ditch that you filled in has to now be excavated and reinstated as a ditch? Or your driveway is too wide? You have to narrow that down to six meters? We're going to have dual standards out in the community with grandfathering. Is it just new permits or are you going to go retroactive or our, what's your thoughts on, on that?
Daryl, are you comfortable with me answering this question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Through the chair. So how it has worked in general is that if there's a problem, the board gets involved and addresses it. So there was an example over on Riverside Avenue where one place was landscaping. It was right over top of our servicing and lit a ditch. So that is a problem with the issue. So I think in general, the district doesn't like staff don't go looking for, for bylaw infractions. It's more, it was an issue, right? And then when someone comes forward with an application, that's when we try to tidy up a property. So they can either come into compliance or they can request forgiveness by getting the appropriate permits and approvals from council or, or whomever has the authority to do that approval.
Counsel McCabe.
Yeah, thank, just my old property in 214, Capel, as an example, there's two driveways. The, the second one is under permit through, through the district and the ditch is filled in and that's under permit through the district. So there's a lot of those situations out there where they're non-conforming, they're not only grandfathered, but they're approved.
It's not non-conforming and it's not grandfathered if it's got a permit. It's legal.
Thank you.
Hey, I have to agree with, with the council here on some of these things. I think that this, we need to have another look at this. This has to go back to the planning committee. I'm concerned, my concern is process and us throwing more roadblocks in front of people that are trying to accomplish something, get something done. My other problem is we all struggle with, we all struggle with trying to get a contractor and you can't get a contractor because they're booked. And then all of a sudden they get a job can't, canceled. So now you've got a contractor, but now you don't have a permit because that wasn't in the game plan. So those folks that can get a contractor that, you know, that they're doing, they're going to do some work, should be allowed to continue with that work and just make sure that, and Daryl and I have had this conversation, make sure that they're, you know, common sense, safety is, but I just, I'm just concerned about roadblocks and making it tougher to do, to do biz or to do anything to your property here in St. Louis. So I think this should go back to the, the planning committee as well.
Oh, it's, so it never went to the planning committee. So this is not a development services bylaw. This is an operations and a bylaw enforcement bylaw and, and Sarah took it on because we're, we're getting so much feedback from it that it wasn't working. So Sarah took it on, helped Daryl, helped John come up with a bylaw that would work, streamline things, make it easier. That's, that's why it ended up here. It hasn't been to council yet. It's at this committee, three weeks to the next. I, I think council can look at it over those next three weeks and, and come up with any concerns and we could bring it back to another council meeting. I think this is probably outside the mandated of the planning and development committee. Really, it's they're dealing with OCP issues and things that filter out of the OCP. This is, this is a development services issue or this is not a development services issue. This is operations, this is bylaw. I don't know. I, I think Sarah's done a lot of work. She put together this table. She can, she can handle the, the table showing the changes and, and council has three weeks to consider it. But this, this is not intended to slow things down or to, to make things more difficult. This is intended to streamline things and make things go faster. That, that's our goal here and, and that's it. We're, we're not having secret meetings upstairs with John and, and, and Daryl saying, how, how can we trick people? It's, it's, we want things to move faster and, and that's the, the whole reason why the bylaw.
I do, and I don't think that council's thinking that you're upstairs. How can we trick council? Take everything a little. I don't think, I don't think we think you're doing that. I just think we need clear understanding because we're the ones that are in front of the public, right? We're the ones that are getting called by the developers. We're the ones that are getting called by private property owners. So we need to understand what's going on because we can't send everyone to you guys because you're busy, right? So if we have an understanding and we go, okay, you know what, this is, this is why this was changed. Go ahead, Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I, I. Well, I don't mean to sound harsh, but I don't think it's up to you to decide what planning and development could or should look at and actually have some. I think it would benefit. And then that's, this is my point. It would benefit to have this go through. And I, I think it does have quite a few planning implications in, in my opinion. So I got elected. That's my opinion. I think it should go to planning and development. I think the other thing is if I'm just backing up and taking a look at the process here, I mean, this comes on to the, 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 the agenda Friday. I mean, it's a long weekend. Then it comes here for a discussion and just saying that you have another three weeks to look at. I'm sorry, that doesn't cut mustard with me. That's not the process that I want to be looking at here. And I think it should go back to the committee. We can take a look at it. That's why the committee is there. Then, you know, other counselors can come to that committee too. I would encourage them. And we can take a deeper look about how this relates to the other parts that we're also dealing with on site permitting and the rest. We've discussed things that like the, like the ditches and like the driveway lines before. And there's some controversy around that in town as well. And I take your point about, you know, what's non-conforming, what's on. You know, are these problems too that we actually have to deal with? Or are these things that we think we have to deal with, but it's not really a community problem? I think we have to look at some of these things through these lenses and, and approach it that way. So that's why I said that I think it would benefit for going back to a committee. It's to make this better, not to. Yeah. Thanks.
No, I understand. Counsel Bushel.
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Yeah, I, I, I commend you for doing all this work. But you ought to understand, we've only had two weeks to read this and then this we just got on the screen today. So this is what we want to look at and see what was in the past and what is in the future. But to ask us to vote on this right now, we haven't hardly had time to look at it. So we're not, it's not that we want to vote on it or we just want to take a look at it and spend some time on it. Because yeah, there is some concerns in the community. So we want to just be sure what we're doing. Well, I know it's for information, but I don't want to vote on it. And I, I just like to, I think it should go to the planning committee myself. And that's, that's my opinion.
Counsel McCabe.
Is, thank you through the chair. Is there anything in this document that is time sensitive that, like, I'm thinking, why couldn't we adopt this? I mean, this is just committed, committed at whole. We're not voting on this right now. This is for discussion. But why not implement it and then any changes can be changed is, I take that approach.
Thanks, Counsel McCabe. Counsel Evans.
Thank you through the chair. I, I agree with your question. Oh, sorry, go ahead. It was time sensitive.
Through the chair. I think what you're asking is how can we can't make amendments to existing bylaw?
No, my main question is, is this document time sensitive to be implemented?
It's not. So the regulations in it are not different from what's in the current bylaw. It's just reorganized and has plain language. There are a few odd little things that have been added in that are currently covered under other bylaws. It's just more clear and more concise included in there as well. And it's also streamlining some processes that were already in place that weren't actually supported anywhere. We don't have a policy or the current bylaw didn't really support that. So it's kind of putting that all in place. So it's written down, it's clear for staff and for developers or contractors. So it's not time sensitive. The, the, I think, I think for us in terms of the development process and trying to streamline that process and make that easier to work with for people. That is, that's the only thing that's important. And I say us, I mean development services.
Okay. Counsel Evans.
Thanks. I thank you for this. I think that we have three weeks to get this done. And I, I tend to agree with Counsel Malcolm once. We could, I mean, a lot of this stuff's already in play. And it's just making it easier, more to understand. I'd say, um, I understand why Counsel Bailey and Counsel Bushel want a little more time, but, um, I don't feel any pressure. I just, I think we got this weekend. Do a good job of getting this done by three weeks for sure.
Counsel Rich.
Yeah, I, I would like to, through the chair, I would like to have some more time with it and, and especially stuff rolls in. I mean, honestly, as a new counselor, I don't know all these bylaws and I'd like the opportunity that, you know, either give Sarah a call or, or someone and, and just if I've got questions and concerns that I've got time before we make a decision. I think part of it is, is we are representing the community and we have to. So a lot of the information. You guys know, as a new counselor, you know, I was reading through this. I've read through it a couple of times and, and I was like, you can't have two headphones on. Who knew? That. And things like that. And I didn't know that. I mean, I, and I've lived in this town my entire life. So I would like a bit more time for myself and I'd like the opportunity where I can just send you an email and go, hey, what's this? What's that? And it's, it's not challenging you. It's just saying, I, I don't understand why this is in place or how it's going to work or, or how we're going to define it. So just more information on certain things for myself. That's, that's kind of how I see it.
Thank you. I think just listening to council, I think they obviously want some more time. And I think the planning committee would like to bring it to back or bring it to the planning committee and have a, a conversation to see if it all pieces together because sometimes things don't piece together as well as we'd like them to. Go ahead, Counsel Evans.
Um, if, if we have plenty of time to, to read this and ask questions like Counsel Rich said, but email and clarify things by the next meeting, do we need to take it to the planning committee if we have, or part of a month to do that?
Talk to the planning committee.
I still think it's a, it's something that should go to the planning committee. I just, you know, I mean, and council is allowed to come and participate in that meeting and discuss it, even though they sit in the galley, they can, they could, you can come and comment on it and.
Counsel Bailey.
I think it would benefit from it and I would encourage other counselors to come to that meeting. Just it, you know, we're, we're pretty, it's open and, and I think there's no reason why counselors can't even join that meeting and discuss it at that meeting. I wouldn't have a problem with it. I, I don't know what the rules of the committee would be, but you know, in the end, it comes back to council anyways.
Counsel Rich.
Through the chair, I, is there any reason it wouldn't go through planning? Like if, if we're like, hey, let, let it go through planning. What's, I mean, it's going to add 40 minutes to your guys' day, but.
But that's okay.
But that's a good thing, right? But there's, I can't see why there wouldn't be a reason for not to go through planning.
Okay.
I agree.
Everyone agrees?
Yeah.
Okay, Sarah. Please to come to planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Community Service Grant Application, Counselor Rich.
Um, so we had the meeting last week for community service. We did the second round. For the first round, we didn't have a whole lot of applications and we had $45 left over. We put it back out to St. Louis and Communications or the powers that be did a great job getting people to apply and we had just over $96,000 people were asking for. So we didn't have enough money to, to give everybody what they wanted. But we had a great meeting. It's a great team. And you can see up there which grants were successful. There were two that were not, but we have also, there's also other grants within the shoe shop and we did pass on to those folks that, that we were not able to give money to this year. Please apply next year and also gave them a different options where there are other grants. And we thought that they had places where they could still, you know, do their projects because everybody had absolutely fabulous projects. That was, yeah, it was, it was a great day.
Thank you. Any questions for Counsel Rich? Counsel Bushel.
Yes, through the chair. Counsel Rich, the two that didn't get, get any funds, was it their application alone that wasn't done right? Or was it just, it just, you, you, the, the, they didn't need it or?
Applications were all done right. So we don't look at it anything. And if the applications aren't filled out, Roger and Robin actually will go back to them and say, hey, guys, you missed here or your financials aren't where we need them to be. They're really great at, at helping people get their applications, right? So the, the two that didn't, the one, they, the top one can, there's other places that there, there's a lot of grant money that there, there's opportunity for. And with the snowmobile club, there actually is an extra building and, and we looked into that and stuff so that they, and we would love to give them money. We only had half the money. And so then when we started going, you know, where can we put it? We, we felt that our decisions were the best spend in the community this year and, and next year, of course, there's lots more money for people to apply. So.
No, that's good. Thank you. I just, just, just was curious because I, I know that they, they, they haven't received any funds for quite a few years and they're doing, they're doing well. And they're, they're doing really well.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Bailey.
Yeah, I, I was going to ask about the snowmobile club too as, as well since, but I, I understand the, the financial pressures you're under here, which is, which is nice to see that all the applications came through and, you know, we rectify the problem as we do we would from the first round. So thanks very much for doing this and I'm really glad I'm not on that committee.
It's fun. You're giving away money.
Yeah, I'm very glad I'm not on that committee.
Okay, moving right along, temporary use permits and short-term rentals. That would be, I just want to bring this forward for the new council to, to understand some of the thought process that went behind the short-term rentals in the residential areas. We have spent two and a half years working on this rezoning and bylaws to, with short-term rent, rentals in residential areas as standbaleons were brought forward for this. Open houses and public consultation, preferred to keep a sense of community and safety in our neighborhoods and not have full houses for rentals. So with that in mind, they thought opening up with this process, it would open up housing for long-term renters as well as housing inventory. Because as we know, we can't even, we have an issue here at the district office finding staff and finding housing to live in. So we also looked at this process and we went to help assist our hotels with, and motels that carry the biggest burden in taxes and staffing expenses. So we also looked at, at this also as aiding them with all of their expenses. So it was, it was a long process. So I just, moving forward, I just want to caution us that we worked really hard to get where we are with short-term rentals and opening up some housing. And to offer a TUP, you're offering three more years of the work we've already done for two and a half years. So I'm just, I, I'm trying to weigh out where, you know, we should be sitting with this. And I understand, I totally understand that in residential areas with short-term renters and offering a TUP, there's a business license attached. So if that short-term renter is in the neighborhood and disrespecting the folks that and disrespecting the folks that live in that neighborhood, then, um, his business license can be pulled. And I understand that, but when we pull a business license from a short-term renter, we have to remember that we're shutting down all the renters behind that. So people are going to lose vacations. So I just want to caution us, um, how we move forward with this. And, uh, make sure that, you know, we understand that we worked on this process for two and a half years and another three years means five and a half years of no, not opening up our housing inventory. That was critical for us. So anyway, um, I just wanted to bring that up because I felt it was, uh, necessary that new council understood the process that we went through to get to this point. So does anyone have any questions? Short-term rentals. Councillor.
Yeah, respectfully, I'm not sure what your message is.
Um, my message is if we are going to spend two and a half years on zoning and bylaws, why are we offering up short-term?
Yes.
Um, sorry, a temporary use permits, sorry, temporary use permits on short-term rentals because it defeat purpose.
Okay, thank you.
And it opens it up for everyone again. Go ahead councillor.
Well, not only did we do that, several times, um, we let them have extensions for another two years. So that's five years.
Well, no, we haven't yet.
Yeah, well, we have.
Councillor Bailey.
Uh, yeah, no, um, so just as a way of clarification, the, the T U P was for three years.
Yeah.
It can, it can at council's discretion be extended for another three years. So it doesn't have to be. Uh, well, they asked for two, but it can be extended to three if you want. But, uh, maybe all I really say on this is that I, there's nothing, you, you know, I agree with your point in, in principle. In practice, it's a little more nuanced and a little bit more complicated, right? I mean, the reason why I supported those T U Ps is not because I want to take away long-term housing stock. I don't. But I also want to make sure that where we have short-term rentals, that they're complying with the rules. And this is the balance that I think we all make when we do T U Ps. And we've done it on several properties. It's not just short-term housing. Uh, you know, we've done, we've allowed campground or, or, or RV spots on Main Street where the zoning doesn't allow. We've allowed CCANS on a property where zoning doesn't allow. Like it's, you know, the discussion about T U Ps, I think would be a reasonable discussion to have whether we even do it. But then if we don't do that, then the zoning is the zoning. But I, I see what you're saying, but I think it's not about T, it's not really about the short-term housing. It's probably more about how we're using T U Ps to basically say, well, our O C P, okay. I didn't know it's supposed to be this, but you know, the T U P allows us to get around it. So I think we're, we, either as a councillor, we're going to use the T U Ps or we're not. And that's probably the more apt discussion because, yeah, your, your point is valid. But the reason I voted for it was I think the owners of those sites were being responsible, coming forward, doing all the right things and trying to comply. And, but, you know, there's points on either side is what I'd like to say. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you. And I do agree with you, T U Ps. I, um, there obviously is a good place for them. I have yet to, I have yet to see one morph into something that's spectacular here. We use it a lot. And then three years later, we still have the same thing. We do an extension. So I think the bigger question, you're absolutely correct, is the use of a T U P. Councillor Rich.
Yeah, I, I sit on the housing committee, so it, it's been a conundrum for me. Um, but I think Sycamore's is bigger issue with housing is we have nine percent rentals in Sycamore's. So only nine percent of our homes are, are for rent in Sycamore's. And then our other, um, big problem we face in Sycamore is thirty-five percent to forty percent of our homes are secondary homes. So they are, when we put blocks on short-term rentals in communities, that does not mean one that then, uh, that person rents the house out to a family in town or that they don't then sell it and someone buys it as a secondary home and it sits empty four months a year. Um, it's, it's very obvious that, uh, the forty-five, forty percent of people with secondary homes do use them for short-term rentals when they're not here, um, which brings in money and tourists and, and, and a different viability. So putting it all on short-term rentals is not why we have a housing crisis, in my belief.
Understand. Councillor Bushell.
Yeah, that's through the chair. Good points, uh, Siwan. Um, I, you know, I think the, the problem with the housing stock, part of the biggest problem is the landlord, landlord tenancy, tenancy act is, uh, nobody wants to rent their house out anymore for long-term because you, once you get some bad renter in there, you can't get rid of them. And, but the, the, the short, the whole zoning bylaw one thousand and in, entrenching the short-term bylaw in that. The plan was is how do we, how do we allow it to continue but control it? And we have a lot of short-term renters that are registered. And what we are trying to do is make it a level playing field for the hotels. And, uh, and this is the, one of the ways we can control it. So it's up to their neighbors. If they have a short-term rental next door room that's not registered and they can go to our website and follow the map and see if that home is registered. And, uh, they can file a complaint if they're making noise. And, uh, we have some in our area where we live. And, uh, I look forward to the rental season coming. We're, our John's going to be busy this year. And he'll, he'll be really busy going around making these people can, conform. And, uh, it'll probably add a little more stock to the housing, but not a whole bunch. Uh, we have a lot of desirable, we have a desirable place where everybody wants to come and have a second home. And that's, uh, we just have to find developers that are going to do affordable housing for us. And, uh, or we'll have to do it ourselves.
Thanks.
Good points.
No, I just want to, uh, just.
Good point.
Just have a conversation about it, just so that we're all in the, reading off the same, reading out the same book here. Okay, moving forward, proposed, uh, decibel regulations, Shishawat, Mary Lake, councillor Bailey.
Yeah, so, boy, this is in a really interesting committee of the whole so far. Um, yeah, I wanted to.
That's good.
Yeah, it is good. Well, I'm gonna obviously disagree with councillor Beach on this, but I wanted to bring this forward because you know, I, I, and I kind of came out of the article where we're getting into spaces that, uh, maybe the CSRD is getting into spaces around regulating, um, boat noise and measuring boat noise and pushing for regulations to have decibel, uh, meters out on the lake or, and handle complaints around what that looks like. And I'm concerned by this. I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, as we go forward to the society of where everything should be regulated, what are we, what's the plan, right? What's the plan for municipal government? What's the plan for regional government? And how are we putting rules in place that are enforceable? And I question that this is enforceable. I question whether this is a problem that needs to be solved. And I even further question whether the CSRD should be funding a group, uh, to go ahead and lobby other levels of government to push for that. I think if there's groups out there that want to do that, that's great. But I was troubled by that. I'm also troubled that now we, we, we have this sense that government should solve every single issue or problem. And I don't think that's our role here. Our role here is not to do that. Um, and we've got to pick and choose where our focus is going to lie. And I think this is outside of that focus. I, I don't think this is something that, um, that we should be, that, that, that it could be solved through just many different other means, whether working with the manufacturers or, or, um, you know, boat safety, uh, programs. There's a myriad of boat safety programs that it could be dealt with through there. Um, so I wanted to bring it up for a discussion. Um, I, I, I don't support further regulations like this on, on the lake. Um, I'll try to be, um, very consistent in that in my time on council is I think less regulations is more. Uh, I think when we can convince people to comply and be good neighbors, that's the best way to go rather than trying to figure out um, how to use additional government resources to make people comply. So I'll just kick it off with that, those comments.
Okay, councillor Beach.
Um, Ian and I've actually had a couple of conversations via email that you guys aren't, um, pretty too.
No, they're on it.
Were they on it? So, no, that's good. I guess, I guess my point is it, it isn't just about the noise that these boats make that, that the boats we're talking about, I think are very powerful speedboats. Um, and, uh, there's, there's a, there's a safety issue in, in sort of the fact that that I have experienced on the lake and I don't know if any of the others have, but where I have spent time where the boats race. And so to me, it's not just noise. It is both noise and it is the danger of speed and pu- and power for these boats. And I guess I'm not thinking that, you know, I don't want our council to sort of come out in, for these boats, because that's kind of like an invitation for more of the same kind of boats on the lake. But what I would like, um, I also don't feel like we need to, um, start, start talking about banning or I, I would like to give the people on the lake that live along the shores of the lake and have to put up with this, some tools where if it's a problem, they can come with their evidence of a problem. And then we can assess how big the problem is. Right now, I don't know because I'm not living up the cabin below Pete Martin Bay anymore. So this was a period of time where, where I shared our experience with these boats racing on that arm. I don't know if it happened anywhere else. I suppose it, I, I suspect it probably didn't because that was the quietest arm of the Shishawat Lake at that time. But I couldn't not share that experience because it was dangerous. It was dangerous if they had hit something in the water. It could have been dangerous to them. It could have been, it could have, you know, like I said, we watch wildlife swim the, across the lake all the time. Um, so I just wanted to bring that forward and I, I guess I do feel we have a bit of a responsibility here to have some kind of tool, uh, some kind of way that people living along the shores and using us as their commercial center and their place. They really think of coming in to Sycamore's, uh, as their land base. Um, when they're on holiday, that we do have businesses that sell the boat. And, um, so we have a bit of responsibility here to give them some way to let us know if there's a problem. That's all I'm saying. I'm not, you know, I'm not saying anything else right now. But I really think that the people that live on the shores are the ones to tell us how this impacts on them and how it impacts on the natural environment that they love. And that's why they pay lots of money to be up there, is my understanding. So that's my, that's my view on it.
Councillor Beach, councillor Bushell.
Yes, through the chair, I, uh, you know, it's a, it's a big, it's been a long topic for, going on for years and our issue is, is, is we're in Sycamore's and the only thing that we can control is what's in Sycamore's and that's the channel. And they don't go fast in the channel and they don't have any noise in the channel. They're very quiet because you're just pitting, you know? So when they, you know, and I don't live on the lake, but I live above the lake and, and town travels up. And yeah, it's, it's disturbing and it's very disturbing when you're trying to even have a conversation.
Yeah.
It's not even the big boats. The big boats are the okay ones. You know, they, they, they go through the exhausts, go through the water, half of them. It's the, some of these little boats that spent all day just driving around in a circle. And they're just really noisy and it just, it, it bothers you. And that's the CSRD's problem because it's out in the CSRD or it's the federal, it's a federal waterway. So it's a real complicated topic that we don't have any control of. If you advocate and, you know, sure, we can, we can, but we'd have to do it as a joint group, you know? So I, it's a tough pro- uh, problem and, uh, the noise does bother me when I'm trying to have dinner or conversation with somebody. And, um, but it's not the big boats. It's, it's the little boats are the worst ones, if you ask me.
Okay. So, and I'm landing towards councillor Bailey with this. I, I, I think this is not, not our fight to have. It is what it is. And frankly, we're a voting community. So, you know, sometimes you take the good with the bad. And I think this is a situation where we take the good with the bad. As far as I'm racing up Seymour, that's a way out of our amnesty or ant seat. That's out of our jurisdiction. You know, that'd be like uh, me running out and giving someone a ticket for speeding with my, my, my truck, you know, or so. It, it's just out of our wheelhouse. So I just, I don't see a solution. They can lobby away. And, uh, but like Gordon said, some of, and I agree with you, those big boats, those big boats, they blast through. Their, their noise is gone in a minute because they had to stop at the gas station to fuel up because they just went for a minute. And then they're out to the shark shack where they're going to have to fuel up again. So they're not as bad as some of the smaller ones. Yeah, for sure.
I'm, I'm sorry that they are, they're the ones that are racing. They're the cigar boats or cigarette boats or whatever they are. And their exhaust is not going into the water. And probably that's a good, good thing. It would scare the living daylights out of all the fish. That was, this way they're just scaring the wildlife and irritating the humans. But, um, I guess my point too was that it isn't just a noise issue. It is a danger issue as far as I'm concerned. Because they do race and they are.
I agree. And, but we're not the boat police.
I, I, I guess so.
Education, you know what? I think we go back to education. Transport Canada has a lot of stuff they send out, which they send to marinas and I forward it to, I get it to Sarah all the time, Chamber of Commerce and, um, tourism, so that they can share all of this information. So, um, it is, it's education and it's be a good neighbor. Like, watch your weight, like right now, watch your weight. The water's high. Um, councillor Evans.
Yeah, no, I, I agree. I agree with you Pam and I agree with you too Ian. And I'm not trying to be below the road, but it's, it's a pain in the butt, a pain in the ear. And, uh, um, it's like Harleys. I mean, I, I get a warning if I got a hole in my muffler and it's not as loud as one of those bikes. And it's, so we need to write, you need to write letters. We need to get people to write letters to the, the government. They can do something about it. Uh, is what we need to do because we can't fix this. I think.
Councillor Rich.
Through the chair, I'm going to be the devil's advocate. Um, I don't think that, uh, we're in a position to monitor this or should be first. And the other thing is for us to regulate what someone thinks is fun. So, um, you, uh, are you a freedom fighter or terrorists? It just depends on what side of the line you stand on. And to say that one group's idea of what a good time is and another, and that, that their group is more important. I don't think, again, this is somewhere we should be, um, I actually like the big boats. I also like Harleys. Um, so I have the big pipes, so nobody runs them over. Um, so, um, uh, you know, to, to, for government to come in and say, this is how you need to enjoy this all the time. And these are your benefits and this is how you will do it. Um, I don't think that's our place.
Thank you for, uh, councillor Bailey.
Yeah, and, and that was really my point about these regulations. I mean, you brought up Harleys, right? Well, where does, why do, why would we take a decibel meter to the boat and not a Harley? Where does this all end? And, and I think what concerned me was that we have a CSRD that is actively kind of pushing this. And I don't think that's the role of government. I really don't. I, I, I think if you start taking that to its logical conclusion and how far you go with it, I think you end up in a very bad spot. And so I guess why I wanted to have this conversation was to basically say, I don't think we should be engaged in this. I don't think the CSRD should be engaged in this either. So.
So, Pam, just hold on. I just want to correct something. It's not the whole CSRD. It's two areas of the CSRD. Um, area E and, um, area F. So that's just who.
Thank you.
Of, yes, not, no one else put their hand up at the CSRD level. But, and those areas get to kind of do their thing anyway, like at the end of the day, councillor Beach.
Um, yeah, I think what I was afraid was going to happen here and why I even took a stance on that was that I thought Ian was going to ask us to come out in. Took a stance on that was that I thought Ian was gonna ask us to come out in full support of the boats. I, I think that as it is a CSRD issue, and it is an an issue. Uh for people on the lake, um but because it was the CSRD is responsible or is responding. Or areas of the CSRD are are putting forward the complaint. I did not want to us to fly in the face of the CSRD again on anything um like that. It, but. I, yeah, I don't think we need to act on a regulation. I just think we need to understand that it's more than noise that. I think people on the lake, probably if we were able to talk to them. Would find that it's more than just about the noise that for some of these boats anyways. That was my point, because that was my experience and it's my only experience living up the lake.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And the other thing is, we always wanted to review the CSRD, so I mean.
Oh yeah, but we don't need to get involved if we don't have.
And they're not getting involved in it either, only two areas are, so good on them and. Go on and we are moving on. Okay, strategic priorities, portfolio updates. Kelly, you wanna put those on the screen? Does anyone have some, any updates on portfolios? Might as well throw those in with counselor reports. If we can have a, do that, let's do that. Counselor Evans, let's start with you. Any updates on your portfolio and your counselor report?
Well, one thing that's, the chair, one thing that's not in my portfolio is I sit on the library regional board. I was at the meeting last week in Kelowna and uh so that's, that took up uh my day there. And it worked out well, because while I was at, finishing the meeting, I got the text, we were induced by daughter. So I am a grandfather and I'm, I thank you for congratulating me, I'm just thrilled about it. And uh so yeah, she's a, she's a lovely little girl. She was big. And yeah, she's a healthy little lady and uh, yeah, I'm in love, pretty cool.
Good, excellent, congratulations. Counsel Rich.
Congratulations to uh, are you grandpa or uncle?
Grandpa Bob.
Grandpa Bob. We know how to brush you now. So it's uh the first, I listened in on the planning meeting, which is always good. I like to do that. Um. Towards our portfolio was Pam and I worked very hard um. With the drug awareness and community support program that we put together with support um. From the Eagle Valley Community Service, DOS, uh the high school. We had an incredible turnout, Pam can speak more to who was on our panel. We had a lot of people in the room and. I think it was a really good start to um looking at things that are happening in our community and with our schools. Um and you know, even the shoe shop and and how um. Drugs and drug awareness and and things we need to do to come to come together. And I think the big takeaway for me is uh. We need to do a lot more, uh which is good, because we started um. Uh and then the other thing I did was I met uh just just by phone with Brent Jennings for about an hour and he's our school district eighty-three trustee. He's brand new, um a really great guy and and he's very enthusiastic. He's coming today, I believe. Um and I think he's gonna uh be great for Sickmose. Um and then I have the Shoe Shop Community Foundation grant meeting and again, it was fun and giving away money, so.
Excellent. Council Bushel.
Thank you, um through the chair. Uh yeah, it was a pretty mild a couple of weeks. Um. I uh attended the uh uh Biz After Biz, which was a lot of fun yeah, a couple of weeks ago. Um wanted to congratulate Bianca uh on her first passing her first budget. Uh we went, had a special budget meeting that was uh pretty special. So we got that budget passed and then just planning and development, uh yeah, lots of, lots of inquiries and lots of phone calls, so yeah, keep me busy. Awesome, thank you.
Council Bailey.
Yeah, uh lots of planning and development uh I've been doing and I attended Biz After Bell and a few other. Meetings. It seems like two weeks is, like, I can't remember what two weeks ago was, the the honest truth, but uh. Yeah, Gordon and I also had a really good uh phone call with a couple of folks from the lower mainland who I think can. Help us figure out some strategies on going forward and getting some developers, I guess, interested here and. You know, say some potential there. So, you know, pulling on as many resources as we possibly can to. Figure out how we move forward as as a town. So, yeah, kind of exciting times.
Excellent, thank you. Council Beach.
Um for me, uh I attended the interagency uh meeting on the sixteenth, which is always uh. Really informative and you get to share a lot about what the programs are doing, services are are doing across. Uh across, around our area and across the shoe shop actually. Um. Uh took in a portion of the CSRD, couldn't sit. Thing, um spent a lot of time, as Siobhan said, uh. Organizing, pulling in uh and communicating with people for that uh drug awareness and community supports. Um the turnout was incredible. Um the enthusiasm from the interior health groups was. Shocked me. It was very, it was very, they were very keen, so we had. We had um a a nurse clinician who specializes in uh integrated. Uh mental health and abuse, substance abuse treatment, uh that was an interior hea-. Health um staff member, we had uh, we had pretty much the whole harm reduction team for interior health. Right from burnin' over that was planning to come and then one of them got sick, but we had. Adult and youth covered and it was very interesting to hear, it was very interesting to get. Get all of this sort of um nuances, differences in how they approach. How the 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 problems presenting, the just the nuances in how they approach uh the the harm reduction piece. Um we actually were crashed by one council, one IHA counselor who I didn't even know was coming from Kamloops. Um that was a bit of a surprise, but we managed to fit him in. Um and um. It was just great. Everybody, uh I I think everybody, we had, we had Sergeant McNeil there, we had. Uh Suzie came and did the paramedic, the response, uh safe response piece. Uh Suzie Cameron uh came and did that. It it was, it was um. And everybody just seemed really happy to have this opportunity, but. But also, as Siobhan pointed out, the feeling. As you listen to them talk and especially when we got to our principal. Talking about the culture and the change in that school since the legalization of marijuana. I wish we'd given him twenty minutes, because it was, it was an eye opener. It was, it was really. It was really something, wasn't it, to hear him talk about how things have shifted at the school and what it's meant to. To to the principals at our local and the and the teachers and how much they are constantly on patrol for drugs. They're constantly looking, so that was an eye opener to me. I don't know if Siobhan had picked that up before that night, but that really. Hit me.
Yeah, I've had that discussion before.
Yeah, it it wa- it it was good and um. Yeah, we, everybody, I think the interaction, we had a good turnout, not of public, but mostly professionals. So, so the professionals came up for that and it was a good interaction, really good interaction.
Thank you.
Looking forward to doing more.
Good, thank you, Pam. Uh Council McCabe.
Yeah, thank you. Uh Health and Wellness, uh Shoe Shop Healing Center, just reading off the, here to help me jog my memory. Um like Kelly mentioned, uh we plan on breaking ground this fall, which is great news. Uh later in council, we'll be looking at a a building permit for that, so that's good news. I hope that gets approved. I obviously support it. Continue to support uh retention and healthcare professionals. I'd like to thank Dr. Carol Conick for all her time that she spent with our community. She's retiring from our community clinic, which was private when she first started um in June. So thank you, Dr. Carol Conick, for all your help and support in our our health center. Um and and Dr. Sodalom will be um retiring soon and and uh Karen, our. Manager at the health clinic is actively recruiting and staff, I imagine, is probably helping, I'm sure. To replace him. Uh housing, again, uh Kelly, our CEO, mentioned that the. We'll be looking at the footprint from the Senior Housing Society and also make a decision to accept that and. And move forward with the subdivision and so uh this housing society can move forward with their plans. And then we can move forward to find in on our plans for the community for that. That's what, oh, and I attended uh Siobhan and Pam's uh. Visitation last night and I was very impressed and and proud that they put such a good package together and I I think they probably. Will have developed a model for other uh other communities to emulate, so good job, you guys.
Thanks, Council McCabe. Um I attended the CSRD meeting with the uh and the government's advisory committee was on the agenda. However, it was missing this uplands owner crossing agreements, which um when I asked are still with legal. Um so they will be at the next CSRD meeting, hopefully fingers crossed. Um. Electoral D got a section fifty-seven for the multi-use trails, took twelve years and last couple of years finally, so I went, woo, yay, there's hope, Daryl. Daryl, there's hope. It's gonna happen. Um. But you know, the fact is that it took uh twelve years since the process was started. It seems a little long and it seems like an abusive. Government time and periods of time and it's just system that just is broken so bad that needs to be fixed and. Anyway, so they've got their bikes and their horse trailers and they're, they're all happy. Um went to the special council meeting, thank you, Bianca, um proof the financial, financials for this year. Uh Biz After Biz, I'd like to uh went to Biz After Biz, congratulations to get hooked on their new location. It's a great spot for them. And then welcome the new owners of the Sickmose uh vacation rentals, Chad and Sue Hallid. Um which they couldn't attend, but uh. Uh very nice couple. Kelly and I are off to FCM like she mentioned tomorrow and we are connecting with some folks. We've got. Uh some things lined up, so that's good. I'd like to also thank Dr. Conick and Dr. Conick also appreciates Sickmose and. Um would offer any help that uh we might need in setting up the new clinic, so she's a rock star. Um I just wanna, uh the the district is running some um campaigns, social media campaigns, and I just want to reiterate and remind people. Uh the water is high, so no wake around the shorelines, keep your speed down, stay in the middle of the lake, so. That's really key, because it erode uh erodes the the banks. Um even though we've had some fires, I still wanna. The only thing that can wreck a great Sickmose summer is forest fire, so I am going to continue. And continue to say, watch your fires, make sure you have water and hope is handy if you're having a small campfire. And we prohibit the use of fireworks in Sickmose, so I just want to make sure that everyone. Has that message and keeps um um talking about it. And yeah, you know, and and all of this is with the campaigns, education, so. We just need to keep talking, keep it on the social media, and that's it for me, so. We're gonna open it up to the public. Does anyone have any questions for council? One question. Could you state your name, please?
State your name for records.
For the record.
The great name, my name is Susan. Susan. Through the chair. Um I just wanted in person to uh thank the district. For the funding that they make available to nonprofits and other groups. They, everybody will be like really excited to me when we start talking about dividing the land, but we have twenty-eight units there. They're in need of repair and the first one that we did with uh Eagle Valley Rescue. Was over six thousand dollars, so the ten thousand dollars when we have to do a full rental. Will come very much um in hand for us. We need those places to make this all work. We need the Haven to continue operating for the next five years. Because if not, the the bubble's gonna, the bubble's here, we're gonna reduce it a bit. But we can't discount what we already have. We need to embrace that as well, so when everybody is raw rying about. That we're finally getting um things going across the street. We need to remember that there's always a whole bunch of work that needs to be done in the whole part of it. And Kelly Bennett and staff has been incredibly helpful in either educating me, helping me. Giving me words, giving me pep talks, because sometimes, as you all know, it gets a little bit frustrating dealing with. People. But I'm sincerely grateful and I speak on behalf of um of the society, thank you.
Thanks, Kelly. Any other questions? Anyone online with their hand up? Any comments? No, we're all good. Okay, we're gonna adjourn this committee of the whole meeting at three twenty. I have a mover, Council Rich, Council Bushel, anyone object? Hey, I'll call the personal, all in favor. Hey, Karen, we're adjourned.